The council meeting is called to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with beauty and justice for all.
Well, everyone, please remain standing.
We'd like to ask Pastor Harris to please come and give us a prayer.
Let's bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for the city of Inkster. We thank you for the leaders here. We thank you for this council, this board. We ask your grace and your blessings, first of all, upon this board, that you move in and amongst each and every one of them, that they may seek to do your will, that you may receive the praise, the glory, and the honor. We pray now for the city of Inkster. If we break it down in two parts, we pray for the leaders of the city of Inkster, and then for its citizens, its residents. We pray for the leaders. The word of God says that we should pray for kings and rulers, and all of those who are in authority. We pray for them right now, that you'll surround government with people who know you, who know your will, who seek to do your will, that your will may be done, first and foremost, that all selfish and personal gain and ambition be done away with. We pray for the citizens of Inkster, that we get along with one another, that we look out for one another. We will continue to seek the Lord. Those who know the Lord in this city, that will seek the Lord, that they will humble themselves and pray before God, and turn away from their ways. And you said, "Father God, you'd heal our land." We ask you to touch this land, touch this council tonight. Let your Holy Spirit rule and reign. We thank you for it in the holy, mighty, matchless name of Jesus. And everyone that agreed with that prayer said, "Amen."
Hey, everybody? Anybody had a chance to look at their agenda? Oh, we need to roll call? That's great.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Olden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight, and we do have a quorum.
And now, we can look at the agenda. So, we have A and B in the discussion. We're gonna add a C, Michigan Humane Society. And we're gonna have a D, the Honorable Jason Turner. No one, no one must've told him. So, it's a surprise. Everybody keep it secret, a few more minutes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda with the add-ons.
Support.
Should probably move supportive. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The passes. Alright, presentations. Viking football presentation. Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Ask the mayor to come and assist me.
Jerome, may I have a mic? Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This year, we have some new champions in the city. And I want to say, I want to thank each and every one of you, because I'm a former Viking myself. I went through high school, and I'm a Viking. I'm the only Viking that's sitting up here right now. But, you know, even though we may not have our schools anymore, but the state cannot break our pride, because the Vikings here, they just show that we're still standing. So, I'd ask the coaches to come up, please. And we see, we see they have their own trophy. Let's talk about your trophy.
Yeah, you can show that off a little bit.
It's one of the championship trophies.
Tell us about the team.
How you guys doing? My name is Dwayne Jones. I'm the owner of the Inkster Vikings. I started this youth organization out here because, one, we don't have any schools anymore. So, we wanted to get something going for the kids, you know, to grow up on like we had. We had the Inkster Raiders and different other programs in the city, or whatnot. So, I started, and I'm a Viking. At heart, sorry about you, Rob's Shaw Bulldogs, but I'm a Viking. Yeah, so, of course, that's where the name comes from. Yeah, I started this program about two years, well, actually, I'm sorry. I took over the program about two years ago. So, this is our second year in. And we were state champions on three levels, and we were running up on another level. So, we had huge accomplishments this year. This is one of my, one of my main guys, one of my good friends. He, he coaches the JV squad, which they were the underdogs this year. When I say "the underdogs" to everybody, and they came back and pulled it out and won the whole championship. We really do appreciate the opportunity to be here. We gotta thank, you know, Mayor, the mayor of the city, Mr. Nolan. We have to thank Mr. Williams as well for even acknowledging us, because we haven't got any acknowledgement because of, you know, other teams or whatnot in the area that's been around a lot longer than us. So, you know, we do this for the kids, and make sure these kids stay out of the street. Come on up, fellas. Come on up, fellas.
Let me step out. We want to congratulate the 2018 Inkster Vikings Championship for a seven and under. Who's seven and under? Congratulations to the 2018 Inkster High School Viking Championship, nine and under. And congratulations to the 2018 Inkster High School Viking Championship, fourteen and under. That is all you have to get. Good picture, good picture.
Show people in the front.
Thank you, fellas. Ladies and gentlemen, be in bitching next game. Another presentation.
The other one is the District One Beautification Presentation.
I'd like to call Tony Bailey a piece. This has to do with the beautification committee. We had a couple of gentlemen who live out of corner from me. Over an eye ring, and up at this point, there was a lot of vacant land that they kept cut and clean all year round. And they did it for the last two years. No one had to ask them to go do it. They just volunteered their time, and they saw that this was the community that they loved, and they took it upon themselves to get it done. And we'd like to thank Mr. Milton Young for being one of the...
Shouldn't the mayor be down there, too? You should be down there.
Don't go yet. He had, he had a partner in crime also. We also want to thank Mr. Bill Ramsey.
Speech, speech.
Gentlemen, before you go, we'd like a picture of you with the mayor.
Yes. I really ain't no person that prefers speeches.
Because he appreciates what you do for this city.
But, I am a Viking also. I've been in Inkster all my life.
I've been on Irene for eighteen years.
And my thing is that when I come and sit on my front porch, I want to see my neighborhood. So, I make it look like I want to look. And once, another thing is that, once you start to doing, other people follow. Because people look over there and say, "Oh, y'all look nice," and make that look bad. So, they want to make that look a little nicer, too. So, it just goes right on down the street and down the block. I'm just waiting for the other block to start.
Thank you, gentlemen.
But Milton is one heck of a guy. He really is. He's a good guy. And he's always out there working hard, day and night, really, cleaning up the neighborhood. And when I moved in, you know, I started, it was bad when I moved in. I mean, a lot of the vacant land, that grass was as high as I am, just about. And I started, you know, little by little, cutting it down. And, you know, between me and him, we try to keep the neighborhood looking as good as we can. And it does rub off on people. So, it's, you know, I can't do without him. He's a good guy. And, you know, we appreciate, you know, we don't really deserve, I don't feel like I deserve an award. I'm glad to do it. And, you know, I enjoy it. So, I don't really need an award for that. Very nice of you guys to bring us in here, and appreciate what we do, but we're glad to do it. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We got that photo out, right? Got the photo out?
Okay, next, we're gonna have a presentation from the Michigan Humane Society. Lebo, you doing this? Okay, okay, great.
Alright, good evening, everybody. So, good to see you all. So, I am delighted here tonight to introduce a couple investigators from the Michigan Humane Society. The Inkster Police Department has entered into a partnership with the Michigan Humane Society. And with that partnership, they are going to help us out on any of our animal runs, basically. Don't know how many of you know this, but last year of our nineteen thousand calls for service, forty percent of them were as a result of an animal complaint of some form. While we're out dealing with those animal complaints, there are other calls that are not getting answered. And they could be some of more serious nature, some of less serious nature. So, we are pleased that Michigan Humane Society is being brought on board to really help in so many different ways. So, I'd like to introduce Investigators Mark Ramos and Andy Seltz. So, how this is gonna work with the Humane Society is that when a citizen calls either the 911 line or our non-emergency line with something involving an animal, the officers will respond to assess the situation. If it's something of life-threatening, or something that needs immediate response, the police department will take care of it. If it's something that could perhaps need further investigation or education, we submit a referral form to the Humane Society, and they go out, and they will investigate what's going on, educate the citizens, and take action as necessary. From that point, we are hoping that we can really work together to bring down our animal complaints through education overall, as well as free up the road patrol officers for some more serious crimes. So, if you guys have any questions, you may ask anything. If you guys have anything to add?
Good evening, everyone. Just want to say thank you and for welcoming us to the community. It's really big for us. We've been in Detroit for nearly a hundred and forty years, a lot of experience. We're gonna have three investigators available, probably rotating through Inkster. Very proactive individuals. Mark Ramos is one of them. Like I said, proactive. We like to educate first on everything. A lot of it's just lack of education. Probably ninety-five percent of what we do is educating. So, we get excellent results that way. And we're just very excited to be here and have this partnership with the police department and the community. For, for any type of animal, do you have? Okay, for any type of animal complaint, contact the police department. And then, they're gonna be the first responders as they normally would. If it's something that can be referred to us at a later time, because it's not an issue of immediate public safety or animal safety, then we'll follow up with it more than likely on the next day. Yeah, yeah, and they're still there to take care of that. But you guys have been taking care, yeah, so I completely understand. Thank you, everybody.
And I just wanted to reiterate, you still call us first. We make the referral. So, don't call the Humane Society if there is something of an animal nature. We make the referral from there. So, you will call the non-emergency line of the police department, and we would call them. Thank you. We're all excited.
Okay, we're gonna have our last presentation for the Honorable Jason Turner.
You are Jason Turner, right?
You have a right to remain si...
Good evening, City Council and Inkster residents. Myself and my daughter Asia Sims would like to present Jason Turner, Abbas the Life, for all your wonderful help. We really appreciate what you have done for October the thirty-first, for the children, for Trunk and Treat. They had a blast, and we really appreciate you, and we would like to honor you with Abbas the Life and a lot of gifts from your friends and colleagues. Thank you so much.
I think y'all can fit, but, yeah.
Did I check his ID?
Thank you so much.
If anybody didn't attend, the Halloween party this year was out of control at the rec center. They did a great job. Jason and many of the other staff members set that place up. You know, I was scared walking into it. Haunted locker room, all type of activities in the gym room. It was definitely a good event.
And I just, I just want to tell you, a little bit for y'all that don't know me. I'm a kid from Inkster. I'm a product of the rec. I'm thirty-five years old, and the rec was my first job. So, twenty-five years I've been over there. Came and gone, because I'm grown, so I had... I wish I had a me when I was my age. I did, and I had good influences. And they was telling me certain ones to look at, but none of them I really could relate to. So, a big thing for me is, is to show the kids that they can do other stuff. I wear the stuff they want. I got sweet cars like they got, and I could show them that you can get it by doing something different than selling drugs. I'm just a guy at the rec. So, that's like really big for me. So, Lebo helped out a lot, all of them. Really appreciate them and the support, you know what I'm saying, that they giving to the rec. So, for the community, please come out and help. It's our last one, y'all. We don't got no schools. The rec is the last place before the police department. Because if I don't save them, y'all gonna call her. Help me out. I appreciate y'all. I love Inkster.
Great. Alright, we'll slide on down to the consent agenda.
Support.
Probably move supportive, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Second reading. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped over boards and commissions. I need nominations. What we got?
Well, Mr. Chair, see, there's one person on the zoning board who has fired, Ms. Norma McDaniel. She's on vacation now. I'll talk to her, she must be appointed.
I think Councilman Chisholm had made a nomination for Regina Washington to the Parks and Recreation Commission, but I don't think she was gonna be appropriate.
Oh, we had a, yeah, Regina?
Yeah, that was last week, because he's not in the district.
She's not in that district? Okay. So, do you have anybody in there that's different nomination? Not yet?
Oh, because my district, the person is on there already.
Oh, okay. So, whose district needs one?
I think five.
Five, me?
Come on, Kim, you sleep at the wheel.
We got five or three.
I have to nominate someone, but no one has reached out to me.
District three?
Yeah.
So, anybody interested in District three? Contact on Parks and Rec?
Mr. Mayor, there might be other positions available, because there are people who are, have been appointed, but who have not yet attended the meeting.
We have to let the clerk know if they've missed.
I will let her know. I'm the secretary. I'll let her know.
Okay. Great, any other nominations? Alright, we'll move on down. Second reading.
Council to offer a second reading and approval of text amendments to the city zoning ordinance to create and implement an approval process for murals per the recommendation of the planning commission. For a list of affected ordinance sections, please see the background information.
So, move, Mr. Chair?
Probably move and support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. New business.
Consideration and approval of an offer to purchase vacant industrial lot, which is located on the north side of Cherry Street, between Spring Hill and Middlebelt, and is legally described as duly noted in the amount of fifteen thousand to Zakiya Pope Gibson.
Oh, move.
Support.
Then probably move and support it, discussion. All those in...
You know, I'm still trying to get to, between Spring Hill and Middlebelt. Between Spring Hill and Middlebelt, there's also an eye ring. So, exactly where is this at?
So, the description of the properties for a land sale are based strictly on a plat map. So, not what you see from a Google view, or even what you see driving down the street. So, according to the plat map, because the parcels are identify, and the surveys will be identified by the plat map, there is no street in between Spring Hill and Middlebelt on the north side of Cherry Avenue, according to the plat map.
True, there's, there's no, there's no streets at all. That's on the, that's on the north side of Cherry. So, why would you say between Spring Hill and Middlebelt?
Are you looking at the plat map?
Well, I'm looking at what's provided here.
Yeah, so, there's, there's Spring Hill that's indicated between lots forty-one and forty-two? And the street furthest west is Middlebelt.
Now, I live on Spring Hill, and when I was a kid, I played down in that area, because they take you out on the other side, the rainbow side, over to Bishop's Junkyard. There was never, was a street there.
Right, so, it may not be open. So, it may not be a street that you can actually drive through, but according to the plat map, this street exists. So, that's where the street would have ran. So, we can only use indications based on the plat map, and property lines will be drawn based on the plat map. Now, what you see to your naked eye?
Okay. Hey, well, now, five, six years, there was no street there. I remember, I played over there, there was no street there. I don't want to say how old I am, but there was no street there.
Alright, any other discussion?
I just have a question. What is the intent? That's a lot of land. For the use of the land.
The applicant is here.
Yeah, she, she did, she did arrive today. Ms. Gibson is here.
Oh, okay. Hey. Just a question, what is, that's a lot of land. Are you intending to do something special, or just for investment purposes?
Uh, for both, investment and for the cannabis industry.
Development.
Development.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes.
Consideration and approval of a twenty-one thousand five hundred scope of work budget and contract with Hamilton Anderson Associates for the preparation of feasibility studies, precedent studies, photorealistic renderings, and street scape cross-sections related to the northeast quadrant for the downtown area.
So, move.
Support.
Then probably move and support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes. Deaja, from Jewel Jones Office. Did I pronounce that right? Deaja, Deaja.
Greetings, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Well, we're not really doing much in Lansing at the moment. We'll probably pick up more in January. However, we will keep everyone posted on the proposals. I would like to say that I also had an amazing time at the trunk and treat. It was awesome. It was a delight to see all of the kids. And today was very awesome as well to see so many people get awards and seeing what people are doing in the community. I feel like this is what those meetings should be more about. So, continue to do the work in the community. And if we could have any help for you all, we are here to help. And also, we are praying for the families that were in the fire in Inkster as well. So, we all know that prayers work. So, let's just keep everybody in our prayers and continue to do the service that we know how.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, before you go, good, alright. There seems to be a attack on seniors. And anybody who knows me knows I love to do acronym. So, I came up with SAT. SAT means to satisfy. But, the acronym means, stop attacking the elderly, okay? We, I was recently, and I want to know if Jewel can do something about this. Over the weekend, all these calls come from all these different places. Nobody talks to you, or either it's a scam where they're trying to sell you something. Over the weekend, I got like twenty-five calls from these places. And there's nothing you could do about it. I did call Ratlet and told him about it, and he and I are supposed to be getting together. But, we need to find some sort of mechanism where we're not harassed by these people constantly. And everybody's not as savvy as I am, so they may actually fall. I was joking when I said that. They might actually fall for some of these things, you know? Or they may actually get scared, because somebody told them if they didn't pay them a bunch of money and stuff, that they were gonna get arrested. So, I need Representative Jones to contact me or get with me. I can give him all these numbers. We need to get with the Utilities Commission to see if there's something they can do about this. Because not only is this a hazard, it's a, it's just wrong. You know, you shouldn't have to put up with this. So, if you could take back to him that he needs to get with us here in Inkster, because we're a senior community, you know? So, most of our people are seniors, so to speak. And we need to start doing some sort of effort to get some of the things we need. Now, when I say "stop attacking the elderly," that also includes the insurance that they're attacking us with now, and a couple of other things. So, we need to talk with him.
Alrighty.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you. Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson.
Uh-oh, I didn't know he was here. I got my list back out.
I know I'm in trouble now. I just wanted to bring you a quick update to folks at home and here at the meeting. The county commission recently approved a proposal and a, it's a contract, actually, to prepare, for a company to prepare a comprehensive analysis and strategic pavement management system, and really to... and, and really to present the commission and the county with a ten-year plan for improvements to county roads and bridges. We didn't get in this position overnight, and it's going to take a while to get out of it, but our roads have drastically, are in drastic need of help, as, uh, as you all know. Uh, number one complaint that I get, uh, is about the roads. Uh, I shared that with everyone at the last commission meeting, and I said, I think I'm speaking for every commissioner sitting there that they get the same complaints. Uh, so this is a first step to be able to have a real plan of what's going to be done to get those, all the roads that are, uh, responsibility of the county in the condition they should be in. Uh, and rather than doing them right now, it's piecemeal. It's when you get a call and a complaint, they try to respond to those. Uh, and, uh, and a lot of times, it's not just scientific data they use. They need to do this study to be able to determine which are the worst roads, which are the heavy, heaviest traveled roads and where the greatest need is. And, uh, and so, uh, something I've been pushing for since I've been down there because I got to the county commission and discovered they didn't even have a five-year plan. They just, they basically were very silent and they didn't want to even acknowledge there was such thing as a five-year plan. I, I can't imagine any, uh, level of government being in that position and not to have some idea of what you're doing for the next five years to try to get our roads and our bridges into the condition they should be in. So this will be a first step. I'd be happy to share that with everyone when I get it. Uh, and hopefully, we'll see some improvements. As I said, it's not going to be overnight, but it's, it, I think it's an important first step to be able to tell where the priorities need to be placed. But, uh, anyway, with that, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, uh, a blessed Thanksgiving, and thank them, uh, thank you all for what you do. And Councilwoman.
I'd like any resources or any help Wayne County might be able to provide with these calls and the, um, other things that seem to be, we seem to be facing.
What I, what I know about it too, it, it, well, over the election, that's a different story with all the calls that we received on that. Text messages now, even our phones are not, our cell phones are not immune to the text messages coming in all the time. And, uh, my brother called me because his wife was just screaming at him because he's pretty vocal about being a strong Democrat on Facebook. And she was sure, she was sure that was causing her to get these messages. And, and it was really funny. I, I was like, I, I can assure you, I'm getting them too. And, uh, but seriously, the problem is with the federal, the FCC, uh, is, has just not been doing their job as far as putting together new, uh, new rules as far as the use of our phones, whether it's our cell phones or whether it's our home lines or landlines. Uh, and it, it is a, and, and I hate to sound like I'm saying it's somebody else's problem, but it's all of our problem really to pressure our federal representatives to make sure they're doing something positive to get a handle on this. These calls are illegal, but a lot of times what it is, they're offshore. These calls are being made from offshore locations, and there's virtually no way for them to track them down. And you'll notice your numbers that you're receiving on your phones are spoofed numbers. And they use this process with a computer system, as I know many, almost all of you probably know. Uh, they use this system, uh, that generates numbers that look like numbers you might know someone that lives there. And you're more likely to pick that number if it has your area code in, and they're even so wise as to sometimes have the first three numbers that match one of your numbers. And, uh, and so it gets more, more and more, uh, sly how they go about making these calls. And I, I had one today and, and I had, what's happening too, sometimes our cell phone will ring and then our landline, well, yeah, we still have a landline. We, uh, we have two in fact, but it, but it was, uh, they'll, they'll ring one after the other. And, uh, and it's the same number showing up on the cell phone as it's calling in on our landline. So, uh, it, it, we, we've just gotten to the point that we virtually let everything rolled into voicemail, and it shouldn't be that way. We should have some peace and quiet, uh, in use of our phones for what they're intended.
Okay, like I said, over the weekend, I got twenty-seven calls, and a couple of them had names attached to them, so maybe if we can find how we go about doing this, and some of them actually talked to you. This lady told me she was calling me because my, uh, nine thousand dollar, uh, loan had been approved. And see, I, I said, you're a liar. I didn't, and she hung up on me, of course, but, um, like I said, it, it, we put people on the moon, didn't we, do that? If we can do that, I mean, and they have a thing now where if a call comes to your phone, it says, you know, you, it tells you not to pick it up because it's not something you, you know, want to answer. It looks like we could invent something that gave this piercing yell to whoever was on the other. And I'm just joking. But, um, yeah, we need to get with those people and force them to do that. And I'll lead the charge. Now, everybody knows I don't mind leading charges.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's, uh, it's so annoying. I know, uh, our new system that we've got our cable through, it, it puts it on the television screen, and we don't even bother getting on the chair to see now. If we don't recognize it, uh, we just don't answer it. And, uh, but, but not everyone. I know there's a lot of folks that they depend on that phone much more than some of us do. And, uh, and when the phone rings, they want to answer that phone because it could be a loved one or someone, but there's so many scams that are out there right now, and they're getting more and more sophisticated doing it. And, uh, but I, it really rests with the FCC and Congress doing something about it. Congress needs to have an investigation really and a hearing to determine why they're not doing what they should be doing. When we had, years ago, we, you'll all recall, we had, uh, they came up with a do not call list. We thought that was going to solve our problems, but it hasn't solved the problem at all. In fact, it's just totally ignored. And, uh, and I, I, I'm with you. When we get something going, I'm happy to do it. Maybe new Congresswoman, we can sit down with her and ask her to really, or get her on a conference call and Rashida, I'm sure, well, I'm sure she's got her plate full, but I'm sure she's not adverse to adding something else to it.
Okay.
But anyway, thank you.
I have a question. When will you start your, uh, uh, coffee hour again?
We're hoping to start it in January. Uh, we just sent out a letter asking, uh, Representative, uh, Jones and, uh, the Senator-elect, uh, Betty Jean, Betty Jean, uh, and, and to ask her if they will both participate. I, I don't think I can fill up an hour and force four communities, uh, three communities to.
Oh, we can talk about the community block grants.
Yeah, well, we can. We, we certainly can. Uh, the, the one thing that, uh, I, I, I hope they will both be a part of it. I think it's extremely important to have that connection to the communities that you serve. And, uh, and what better way to do it, rather than, uh, just waiting for someone to contact you by phone or, or send you an email or something? You can hear what folks are thinking, and plus, I appreciate yourself and others on, and, uh, Councilwoman Watley, uh, coming in to those meetings and others that are on the council. Uh, of all the cities that I represent, stopping into those coffee hours and asking questions and letting us know about issues that need to be, uh, addressed. But I appreciate it, and we're making an effort to try to get them engaged in it too.
Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson, uh, I'd like to say thank you. I asked you a question about the roads a while back, although it's still a ways off. But I'm, I'm pleased to hear that you're looking into it, and I appreciate that you acknowledged my question on the road.
Oh, yes, sir. I, I, I appreciate you asking it, and I, I, I wanted to take a little, I, I know, uh, Mr. Bivens worked on this too, uh, uh, pretty extensively, as did the mayor, and others were pushing very hard on the sidewalk over in Inkster Road, and I am, I, I'm so pleased when you drive down the road on a nice day, uh, that you'll see a lot of people using that sidewalk. And, uh, and I, and I, I'm, I'm very appreciative. Some of those small things, but to the folks that live in the towers, I don't think it's a small thing at all. Uh, and, uh, someone in another part of the city might say, well, I don't use that sidewalk, but we have to think of our seniors and those that are, uh, less fortunate than us and, and live in a, in a, uh, subsidized housing that they need the help and, and, uh, and they, they were just, they couldn't, couldn't go down the, the east side or the west side of the road at all, uh, in bad weather, but now it's nice paved, uh, sidewalk. And I wanted to thank, uh, everyone here that had a part in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deaja.
I apologize. Um, on behalf of myself and my bakery business, The Goods Bakery LLC, um, I partner with Mother's Pantry, Operation of Refuge, to give money back to them and return to the pies that I make. So I'm making sweet potato pies until tomorrow at twelve o'clock. So if anyone would like one, a portion of the money will be going to the pantry. So just let me know.
Okay.
Fifteen dollars.
Thank you. Oh, uh, we have, uh, public participation? Oh, Devonte Sharar. Stand up. He's a councilman from the city of Vicor. I feel like he lived in Inkster. He used to come to our meeting so often, but we always, congratulations on your victory. We always want to acknowledge any elected official who comes to our meeting, and you know, you guys can beat him up for leaving us.
He was, he was really trying to become a councilperson here.
Yeah, yeah, we weren't moving fast enough for him. Okay, public participation. Lucy Byrd. Sharon SDA Church.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Um, it's Sharon Southern Day Adventist Church, but it is a Venice community service. That mean that we provide services to the community. Um, I want to apologize for talking too much the last time I was here, but I am keeping my promise. I promised that I would bring, uh, I have, uh, a calendar for twenty nineteen, and I promised I was going to bring it to, to each councilperson and to the mayor. So, hey, I've kept my promise. I'm not going to talk too much, hopefully. Uh, I'm just going to, um, announce it, uh, the program because uh, this is, uh, diabetes. I'm a type two diabetic, and I was able to reverse my diabetes. And my mom wasn't able. She, uh, she had all kinds of complications. So there is a connection between, uh, Alzheimer's and type two diabetes. And it's, it's affecting all of us, and it does have, it does not have any respect to person. Um, we're going to have, um, um, dispelling the myth of Alzheimer's disease. The presenter, um, Edna A. Rose, PhD, MSW, R N B C, University of Michigan, Alzheimer's Disease Center. When? February the twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Where? Sharon SDA Church, twenty-eight, five, three, seven, Cherry Street, Inkster, Michigan, four, eight, one, four, one. Time, eleven o'clock. Contact person Lucy Byrd, three, one, three, two, nine, three, ninety-seven, fifty-three, or you can email me, lucybyrd@gmail.com, and lunch will be served. And we have a specialized, uh, cooking class too. And we're looking for, um, we have, we have a community service day where we, uh, give awards to outstanding, uh, people, but they have to be residents of Inkster. Inside of our church, already have one, Dr. Hall, she's a M.D., but we're looking for another community person to, uh, honor also. So if you, if anybody can help me to find someone, I really would appreciate it. I hope I haven't talked too much.
Clerk. Thank you. True Ajani?
Good evening. Good evening. All right. Coming on behalf of the Creem Incorporated. The Creem is a five oh one C three organization that's geared towards the, uh, spiritual and moral edification of urban males. Over the summer, we had the opportunity to, um, come with Dr. Ben Carson, the envision center over there on Hickory. So, um, I'm sorry, give me a second. You caught me off guard laughing with the brother. I ain't got no breath. We had the opportunity to come with Dr. Ben Carson over the summer with the envision center. He offered us, um, chance to get with the Housing Commission in Inkster and do some programming. So January of two thousand and nineteen, we will be, um, launching our pilot program. We're looking for fifteen young men between the ages of fourteen and twenty-one. We're going to have classes that's geared towards, um, family management, time management, anger management, and conflict resolution. We're doing assessment. After ninety days, I'll bring it back here and let you guys know, um, who the volunteers was, the participants, how they turned out. The reason for me coming today is because we want to do a food drive and clothing drive out of the envision center December fifteenth. As of date, we have, um, three corporate sponsors, Krogers, Gordon's, and, um, I think it's Walmart, Burlington. Um, I talked to the brother Jewel Jones, and he recommended that I come to the, um, city council meeting and let y'all be aware of what's going on. We necessarily, um, it'd be dumb to say we don't need no help, but you know, we not coming today as a crutch. We pretty much got everything situated. We just here to raise awareness and, um, ask the community if anybody want to get involved, or if they have any young man that may be interested in the programming. I don't have a lot of time up here to, you know, go in debt about the program, and I will leave the website, business cards. Um, and I'll try to make these meetings or send a representative as much as possible. But that's December fifteenth at the envision center, um, over there on Hickory. We're gonna, um, do a food and clothing drive, actually, we're going to give the food and clothes away.
Okay.
And some toys, and, uh, at that time, we're raising the awareness of the classes that'll be starting in January. So this is free. It isn't of charge, and, uh, we be dealing with, uh, corporate development services, five oh one C threes, LLCs, articles, bylaws, business plans, uh, publication and editing services. If they have magazines or something, and I'm an author, two books myself, so if they have a magazine or something that they want to publish, um, the biggest thing is the support and the academic service. So it's a new, um, app out that, uh, a guy that used to work for Michigan Works just put in play. It's called Pet Workforce. And what it does is it kind of alleviates the background check and things of that nature because we have employees that is already kind of in tune with the system. So the system is kind of just going to put this person on this side, you know, and kind of just give them a job and the opportunity. So I just wanted to come and, um, you know, raise a little bit of awareness of the program that we'll have starting in January. As I said, I'll leave business cards and, um, you know, email and contact information, and if anybody can help or assist in anything that we got going on, it'd be highly appreciated.
What's the name of this?
The Creem Incorporated. I'm sorry, it's C R E A M.
Okay, and what time is this drive?
So we haven't set up a time yet for it, um.
Okay.
What's the brother? Um, I forget. Uh, Paul.
Paul Bolger.
There we go. So we got the memorandum with Paul, and, uh, we've been approved to use the space or whatnot. Um, I haven't set a time actually yet. I kind of don't know. I didn't, I didn't want to set a time before I came and talked to Inkster, period. You know, we a Ypsilanti-based organization. I'm from Detroit, but, you know, I don't, I, I don't have any connections in Inkster. So I wanted to come see if we meet some church leaders, some community leaders that may want to get involved in this thing. Uh, my whole objective is to kind of let people know who we are and what we're doing, and kind of just get these services out here. Like I have a gigantic belief in economic empowerment, solving a lot of problems, so.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you pick a time? Could you send us a flyer? We'll post it on the community access channel?
Um, I'm actually going to try to send a representative, like, to the meeting, or maybe I can get a contact here. I can email somebody and, you know, keep me.
Get the clerk's information.
Let everybody know what's going on with the event.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Take care. Louis Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Member of the Council.
Good evening.
Dave Milton.
Evening.
I'm down under the weather. You look at me, you say, I need to be home, but I need to be here. Okay, now, one of the first thing I want to say is to the mayor. The mayor say he drove down my street. Mr. Mayor, will you tell the people how you like my street, what you look at? Tell the people.
I don't like your street.
Pardon?
I don't like your street.
You don't like my street?
It's horrible.
Well, you can say what you want, but this, you drive down my street. The police officer drive down there. Let them say what they see. Now, the mayor's the only one to get known on this. I, I wish you hadn't. I wish you hadn't done me that way, Mr. Mayor.
What way is that?
Doing me this way. You keep me coming back down here all the time. That's one thing I want to say. If someone working for me, whoever working for you, if they don't make you look good, get rid of them. They're making you look bad. I ain't talking to them, I'm talking to you. Okay, that to the mayor. Okay? Another thing, when they open these drug place selling drugs, I don't want to see no kids going in there under 21. If you have to squeeze, maybe 18. Drugs is killing our people. You can act, laugh if you want to, but it's coming. You're gonna grow old. You won't want to live in the world that's coming up now. I'm past 90 years old. Okay, I seen all the changes. I don't want to waste, just cut me off. Don't want to waste too much time on that. Okay? In my area, they had three killings since I was here. Okay, did you have enough police to cover that? They had three killings since I was here. Okay, I told them. But the police, when he got hired, given the right tools to do the job well. We don't have enough police officers in Inkster. When I was councilman, I think we had about 62 one time. And I got help from Washington to give us two more. Got two more police in Inkster, from Washington. Anybody here go to Washington? I don't think so. Okay? I want to introduce my niece, the smartest young woman I know. By none. She's very smart. And I want you to know, she represent Washington, too. She represent, okay? That's my niece. My oldest sister died last year. She was 95. That's her daughter. She come to help me because my days are numbered. I'm not in no bad health, just things happen. Okay? Oh, yes. I have a friend here on council meeting. I look at the last council meeting, it looked like they cut out my part that I was in. I don't know, I never did see it. I had the television on all day long, many days, I never saw it. I got a friend over here on the council, a smart guy or a smart lady, whoever it is, sniffed it out. The public need to know. I'm gonna tell the public, too. You better get ready for the winter, too. You're gonna see something you never saw before. Get you some food extra and get you some lamps, a flashlight, and be ready for a freeze. If we have a freeze up in Inkster, it's gonna close everything down. Too many trees, gonna tear down the wires. And I don't know if you have enough people to handle it or not. I want to mention that, too. You can cut me off if it's what I try not to talk too long. Okay, police, killing? Okay? Boy, I snow. Okay? My coat repair. Mr. Mayor? You drove down my street?
Yes, I did.
I was complaining all year to you. Every time I give a report, it's on there. Do I have to do that? I'm paying taxes. I can hardly pay my taxes, Mr. Mayor. I have trouble paying my taxes, but I'm paying. Okay? I have the right to everybody else. No one should have to worry about you keeping the street. You don't spend, I don't know how many million dollars on other streets. In places, they don't have nobody living, fix sidewalks and driveways. But you couldn't come over there and put some black top on my street. Ask any police, either they know or they scared to talk, or they know. Ask either one of them. And ask either one of the councilmen, you don't drive your district. No councilman say anything. You're a councilman for the whole Inkster. If you see the mayor not doing me right, somebody should call it to his attention. Mr. Mayor, you're doing Mr. Johnson wrong. I'm gonna tell you. Mr. Mayor, I tell you, I'm a good man, I'm honest man. I don't say, I do everything right. I'm an unschool man, too. I guess a lot of a laugh at me for being that. I may be unschool, but I know one thing, I'm sound. Pray, trust in the Lord. Okay? Now, if you expect to have good luck in the city, start treating people right. You the head, Mr. Mayor. You hire and fire everybody. That ain't right. We should have the city clerk elected. But the hung dung deal to fix it that way because you messed up. I might be gone, but I might be here, too. I'm a long liver. And according to what I was told in 1943, from what I told, I've lived my life pretty good. And I can smile at where I'm at now. Because I was a little short, boy, tight tongue, wouldn't grow, call me a runt and all that stuff. All those people dead. All of my friends dead.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm the only one in my class of 45. I quit school.
Mr. Johnson?
I graduated in 45. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
But take a lesson.
Okay.
I'm a guy, if you throw me up, I always lie on my feet. Because God have a little brother or something up there keeping my friend ain't up.
Okay.
You could do me wrong if you want, but you'll be sorry. That's for all of you. You councilman, get yourself together. You draw, I don't know how much money you getting, but you letting people get away with everything. You're gonna be begging people for a vote in two years.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
People, remember me. If they don't do their job, get rid of them. That's for all of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your kindness. But anyway, I just want to meet my niece. Okay? You never know. She's a smart, honest to God as far as I know. She's the smartest woman I know.
Okay.
By none. Thank you. Her name is Leetah.
My name is Leetah Goldstein. I'm the Assistant Attorney General, Mr. Whitaker. I'm also the auditor of all of the cabinet members of President Trump. And I work directly in his office. So please pay attention to my presence, because y'all are gonna do...
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, Officer Lebo.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So the police department also receives all of those fraudulent calls. Myself, I get them all the time through on my cellphone. And I recognize that our seniors can sometimes fall victim to that. And in response to that, in the past, I have held senior fraud seminars, and I'm actually gonna hold another one. Don't have dates yet, but I know that it is something that's gonna be happening probably sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I'm gonna solidify something with the rec complex so that way we can have a seminar, tell seniors how to react to these types of phone calls and what they can do to hopefully get them to stop. You know, unfortunately, call spoofing is very difficult to backtrace. The way they do it is in a way it bounces their IP address all over the entire nation and the entire globe, really. So it's really hard to backtrace, figure out where it's coming from, to put a stop to it. So the best way to prevent it is to educate. So I'm gonna be holding a senior fraud seminar at the Twin Towers and possibly at the rec complex if we get enough interest. I will be coordinating with Denise Champagne. And I will have a flyer by the next council meeting. So please come to me if you have any questions. Also, if you have any questions about the gentleman with the Michigan Humane Society, you're welcome to ask after the meeting. Thank you.
Officer Lebo, can we make sure we videotape that seminar so we can run it on Community Access so seniors who don't attend can still watch?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Karisha Springer in Lawana, Washington.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We come to you on behalf of the Inkster Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And it's actually very timely, what Officer Lebo just said. So we're holding a joint workshop with AARP of Michigan. It will be this Saturday. It's here in the city council meeting room. It'll be at 12 noon. And it's actually called Avoid Scams and Fraud. And so we'll have a representative from AARP Michigan to come out and present their AARP Fraud Watch Network presentation. So it'll be about an hour, but again, it's geared towards seniors and letting them know what to look out for as far as frauds, scams, fraudulent phone calls, and things like that.
I guess the other thing, too, besides the calls, is just when you're out, holiday shopping is coming up, there are so many things that happen with us. Making sure that we have protective purses and wallets that are RFID protected as well as the way we position ourselves in the store. So a lot of things will be covered, as well as if you are a victim of fraud, what to do, what steps to take, because it is a very time-consuming process. And some people don't know where to start once it's happened to them. So it's something that's really big, that's been on the news the past couple of weeks. So we're hoping that people come out. Please share this information because it is becoming more rampant.
So it's Saturday, this Saturday, November 24th, at 12 noon. And we will also like to forward a flyer, if it can go up on the city site, that would be great. It'll be here, here at City Council.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Abe Henderson.
Look at him. Yeah, he did. How y'all doing? How my family doing today? Too late for turkey?
Uh, yeah, it's too late.
No, I've been, I got here a little late. Lot of folks in hospital and all that visiting, see, make sure they... Okay. Well, anyway, I just want to say something, you know, Inkster Goodfellas Paper Drive is coming up the 7th of December, always the first Friday in December. So we're gonna be at the rec complex, 7 o'clock. Anybody want to come, can come up and help us along or get the papers together and maybe want to try to get out there and deliver some of the papers and all that. I know, Mary, I just gotta be watchful, you can't, we're gonna need some kind of special insurance. But I just say, so they might lock me up, but I think I can get out of there.
You think you can get out of there?
I think I can get out. But anyway, I want, you know, thank you for letting me say something about the Inkster Goodfellas and all that. And we got some Inkster rights down at Henry Ford Hospital. Greg Stewart, say a prayer for him, he has stroke a while, but, you know, his wife, you know. Grace, she's worked in the court, just say some strong prayers, you know, he's uncritical. And Debbie Gast, one of the Beeman daughters, you know. I know, a lot of y'all know Beeman family. Y'all say some extra prayers, you know, for them, okay, down at Henry Ford Hospital, you know. And thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next time I hit it on time, you might give me a turkey.
I can get you a turkey. Madam Clerk?
No comments tonight.
The city treasurer is not with us tonight, so Mayor and Council Communication. Councilman Olden.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge myself, the mayor, councilman Tishon, Councilwoman Wiley. We all attended the event for...
Push that button.
We all attended the event for Ms. Lester, who was here a couple of meetings ago. Ms. Lester, 90-some years old, she's been a longtime servant here in the city of Inkster. And we all got together and went down and attended an affair. It basically was addressing her for all the service and so forth she's done. I think she did some, she was with the... Yeah, Sergeant Arms for the state of Michigan. Many years ago. And we went down and her family was honoring her for her service, longtime service. She was a person that was really well-known. I got to know her, learned a lot from her, came pretty close from the time I was working for the city of Inkster. And she's a person that meant so much to this community. We went out, we all went down and spent some time with her, attended the event and so forth, and it was well-attended, mostly her family and some very close friends. So I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we did, I think she made an announcement here at the last council meeting. So we did make that, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we all went down and showed our appreciation for her. Also, I talked with Gina Hunter, Mayor, and I'll begin with you. This is a person who has contact with the VA out of Ann Arbor. And they're looking at, wanting to deal with housing for veterans. Being a veteran along with myself and... Trying to think of, I can't think of it right now, but we were contacted. I wound up attending a meeting where I wound up also discussing with the person from the VA. I'll begin with you because they want to come into the city of Inkster and deal with not no part-time housing, full-time housing for veterans. So I'll begin with you on that and giving you that information. I want to thank Commissioner Anderson, I think he's gone. I think he left. But anyway, I want to thank him for, you know, acknowledging our concern concerning the road. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard?
Yes, thank you. Over the weekend, I know most of you know that we had a fire on, at Canterbury. It's at Canterbury.
Canterbury Apartments.
Canterbury Woods. And I'd just like to, all of us to just take a prayer, say a prayer for the families that lost their whole life. I'm not sure if all of them have been placed or not, Mayor, I'm not sure. But we just need to take a prayer, say a prayer for the families. And it's a difficult time, holiday. So hopefully, families will be taken care of. And have a happy Thanksgiving to all, a safe one. See you back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to wish everybody a happy holiday. Okay? And secondly, last year, we engaged the churches to talk about getting together with the city to begin to contact the residents in this area because we want to maintain a communicative flow with the people in the church as well as the community. So we had what we call the conversation with the churches. Now, since then, we have developed this coalition where we're asking one person from the churches in the area to be a contact with us so we can forward any information that the city has, and you can forward it to the churches. Now, we have about nine different churches who are involved in this so far. So what I would like to do, if you go to a church and you wish to be a liaison between the city and your church, this means that if we have information, we give it to you, you disseminate it to your congregation. I'd like you to let me know because we have two projects planned for next year, this coalition. The first is to have something to do every day of Black History Month. I'm sorry?
You say yes.
I thought I was speaking Navi again. The, so we're going to do, we want to do something because last year, there was like one or two events for the entire year. We believe that we have a rich heritage that should be passed on to our children. And the way we do that, the way I learn stuff was in church, you know, Sunday School, you know. Church should be that place you go to get just about everything you need. So we're gonna do that. So I need people from the different churches. Like I said, I already have about nine. I have New Hope and New Birth and, you know, just, you can contact me and I will let you know. We do have another person who's a liaison with this. But that's the first project we want to do. We want to have Black History in Inkster. The second thing we want to do is in August or September, we want to have a community picnic, a picnic between the churches and the government. Now, you know, all of that can be figured out and everything, but we need that participation first before we can get on board. Now, whether you come along or not, we intend to do this, the people who have already signed up for this. But if you are a member of a church and would like to be a part of this in the planning, the dissemination of the information, I would love to have you. We can set up meetings and things like this. Believe it or not, I can get this place y'all want to meet here. So, and those are the two things. So think about that, contact me, we need to get started. I have two more things, well, one more thing. I am starting in earnest on the Memorial Day Parade. Now, I know you all are saying, wow, that's really early, but you have no idea what's involved in that here. The people who have worked with me before, no, this is not something you get up in, 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 in February and say, let's have a parade. No, you start now. And this year is a very special one, because this is Inkster's fiftieth. Fiftieth Memorial Day Parade. I wanna send a call out to, we have tons of veterans in this city, but you got about six of them in the parade. I wanna hear from veterans. I want you to call me. I want, I want that, the float that I'm planning to be full of Inkster veterans, okay? So I want that. Um, so I'm planning that now, and we're trying to do a little something special this year too. And we, we'll surprise you with it, okay? So, um, that's the other thing that I was talking about. Please, with the church context, cause I've told you before, I can do nothing without citizens of Inkster. I am just a mouth, you know, without that. I need that help, I need that participation in order to make things come to fruition. So I appreciate your help and those are, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Tismore.
Good evening. Um, first off, I just wanna say to Chief Riley and Chief Hubbard, please send your crews, who, the brave heroic men and women, who we refer to as first responders, my regards. Uh, when the fire unfortunately was occurring, I heard all the sirens, cause it was right around from my house. But I didn't know what was going on until someone texted me to see if I was okay, and then they told me it was a fire. So I went by there, you know, just to see what was happening, and it was, it was really going down. Um, and they were out there. And I was like, wow, it's cold, it's wet, it's I don't know what, water everywhere. And they were doing their job. And I just really appreciate that, because it could have been much worse. No one was injured. And it's just always a plus to know that we have some of the best. So please send them my regards, it's greatly appreciated. Um, also, I did have two organizations who reached out to me, because they, community organizations, because they wanted to get involved and assist those residents who were displaced. So if anyone doesn't have the contact information to Canterbury Woods, and you would like to assist in any way, shape, or form, they are accepting non-perishable items, clothes, toiletries and whatnot and so forth. If you don't have contact information, get in touch with me, I'll get you in touch with those persons. Um, also, the Mayor Pro Tem had a prior engagement, so he was unable to attend Mother Lester's engagement. And he was very gracious enough to sponsor my way. So I just wanna let you guys know, he would have been there, but he couldn't be in two places at once. So I went on, on behalf of myself and the Mayor Pro Tem. And then also, I guess this might go to the Fire Department and DPS. When something of that stature happens, and there was tons and tons of water being used, cause I also had citizens calling me, cause I was affected as well. Um, not necessarily with the water pressure, but just some different things that were going on throughout the neighborhood with water. Is that an impact because of the Fire Department, um, just using water, or was that something totally unrelated?
What was, what was going on?
It turned brown.
What did?
It turned brown. I have an answer for that one.
Please, let's not be.
Was this water in their homes? This was all in our homes, not on, not outside.
I have video.
We don't wanna see the video. Yeah, so, see, the last time that happened, it was a water main break, and I was able to identify, locate it. It'd be brown and that's going through. I got you, so it takes time for it to cycle through. Okay. That's, we, we were kinda fearful, I perused the neighborhood, I said, okay, where's this break at? But I couldn't find it, so I just wanted to confirm, get some type of clarity, so. All right, thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Councilwoman Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. I have nothing in particular this evening, except to say that I want everyone to have a safe, enjoyable, and blessed Thanksgiving. Please be safe, enjoy your family, hug and kiss everyone. You never know when the end will come. So we have to remember those things. And I love Inkster, we're really moving ahead. So stick with us, we're gonna do it.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Canterbury West, Canterbury Woods, they, uh, I've been helping them back and forth all day long. They're still in need of some things. They had twenty, twenty-four adults and like fifteen children that they're trying to help out. American Blue Cross has, um, they have them in a hotel for right now, until maybe another day or two. Red Cross. And, um, but we'd like to thank the pilgrims, chavels, they donated food and imperishables. Also, Temple Refuge Church, they donate as well. And the doctors who were just here, they donated also, uh, clothing and monetary contributions. I've been getting, ending that with calls by, by money, uh, being donated. If you wanna donate money, I suggest you call Canterbury. And their number is area code three-one-three, five-six-two, three-nine-eight-eight. Um, you can ask for Emerson. And Emerson just happened to be one of our auxiliary police officers who works over at Canterbury. So, if people wanna reach out to them and help our neighbors during the holiday season, it'd be greatly appreciated. Another, last night, I went to, um, to the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus where I watched Juella Jones be sworn in officially as our state rep. Before he was appointed, now he was, he was voted in. And it was a very nice ceremony. They had a keynote speaker who's been in office for quite some time, but she's not there now. But she was the keynote speaker named Mrs. Stallworth. And she gave a lot of encouragement. And one of the things that, that got to me was, she says, um, we need to get out and we need to network with other people. Now, saying that, um, I'm question of my colleagues, they got in their mail about the MML conference that's coming up in March. And I like to encourage, and I've been to quite a few of those. And they're very, very interesting, they have a lot of workshops, and you can bring back a lot of information that will help the city. So I encourage my colleagues to, uh, get with the clerk, sign up. It's only for two days in March, you have a whole bunch of fun. And everyone have a wonderful holiday season, be safe, and shopping stink. Thank you.
Uh, real quickly, I'd like to thank Timothy Williams for taking initiative to honor the Vikings tonight. As well as our community members who are going out and keeping our community beautiful. Um, also, Canterbury Woods, everyone has kinda talked about it. You can call Canterbury Woods if you'd like to help. You can also call Monica Boomer over at Zaman, they're trying to help out in any way they can with, uh, food and/or furniture. They have a lot of different resources over there. Her number is three-one-three, five-five-one, three-nine-nine-four. We can also call Mother's Pantry or drop off non-perishable items where they can at Canterbury. Uh, Mother's Pantry is gonna aid them and their, and Velma Jean Olmer's number, seven-three-four, seven-zero-nine, seven-eight-zero-six. Also, Inkster Task Force is gonna do whatever we can to help them. It's a lot of families who are getting displaced at the wrong time of year. It's cold, it's the holidays, so we're gonna do whatever we can. That fire was serious. I, I would like to thank our firefighters and our police department. Police department got there first, had to evacuate the building, no one got hurt. It's incredible, given how big that fire was. Oh, Inkster Minister Alliance is also collecting donations to take over there. So, if you know one of the ministers in the alliance, you can contact them and make a donation also. And I'm sure they'll take donations for the next several days, cause at some point, Red Cross is not gonna pay for the hotel. And then, then it, then it gets real, you know? All right, we also, let me see, turkeys, we, uh, gave away free turkeys today, at four o'clock. Mister Henderson was late, so he didn't get one. But we gave away a hundred and fifty turkeys in thirty minutes.
Yep. Here it is.
So. I wanna thank Alan Markowitz and, uh, local business owner, as well as, uh, Harvey Weiss. Would make, uh, financial contributions, so we can purchase turkeys. We actually, the Inkster Cobras gave away a hundred turkeys on Saturdays, so we helped them out with those turkeys also. So we, we gave away a lot of turkeys this year. People really enjoyed it, some, people were waiting outside in the cold to get, get a turkey today. So it worked out pretty good. Other than that, I want everybody to have a happy Thanksgiving. Eat, 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 eat leftovers on Friday. You know, and root for Michigan when we play Ohio State on Saturday. Mayor. Councilman Olden.
I wanted to acknowledge, uh, the chief of police, chief. Wanted to thank you, uh, for keeping an eye out while I was going on, out of town for my anniversary. I want to thank you for keeping an eye on my house. I appreciate that. And, um, I thank you so much. And in fact, your, your, your men continued to come by there after I got back. They was doing a heck of a job, but I want to, I want to acknowledge you and thank you for doing that for me. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, probably move, support, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nae. In a jury.